Dr. Torlino?
Here.
Mr. Daughtry?
Here.
Mrs. Fano?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Petrusino?
Here.
Mr. Rappaport?
Here.
Ms. Zuckerman? Dr. Mookrak?
Here.
Ms. Fiala?
Here.
Mr. Sun?
Here.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced numbers of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any interest affecting their interests is discussed without further ado. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Montpelot Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included a timed date and location, that was posted at the Montpelot Township Municipal Building, all Montpelot Public Schools, the Montpelot Public Library, the Montpelot Township Board of Education Administrative Office buildings, the district website, and advertising the Daily Record, the board's official newspaper on January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three.
Ms. Fiala? And Mr. Sun, welcome. It's good to see you places here. I'm for doing all the reports.
Thank you.
And who? Yeah, well, who will give the impact? So who would like to go first?
Um, I'm sorry. I'll introduce myself. So my name is Fiala and I'm the SAC president at the school. So we're gonna do past president, future timeline for our, what we're gonna say. So the seniors had senior sunrise on September eighth, the first Friday of the school year. Seniors gathered on the field, brought blankets, food, and comfy clothing, and enjoyed the morning together. And the past twenty-twenty-six had a fundraiser at Diane's Dairy. They also ran a generic novel clothing sale from September sixth through September nineteenth. They sold everything from shirts, wet shirts, wet pants, and shorts, to accessories such as slides, bath masks, and even cordless, full-aid workers. Um, Rob, Valenti, and Ryan Sun were national merits semi-finalists. The two, wow, they were two of about sixteen thousand semi-finalists in the nation who will be competing to become finalists and even merit scholars. They will have the chance to get a scholarship for twenty-five-hundred dollars. Football has decisively overmended on September eighth and overmoors Catholic on August twenty-fifth. Seniors purchase Spirit Week t-shirts the first week of school and will be receiving their shirts soon. Now, instant decision day, which is announced for seniors applying to college, students are allowed to meet the college refs, recommend the following colleges to receive their decisions on the spot. The colleges include Drew University, Fairleigh Dickinson University, Marist University, Monmouth University, Montclair State University, University of New Haven, New Jersey Institute of Technology, Quikpyak University, Remington University, Rider University, Seton Hall University, and Stockton University. The upcoming fall play was just announced to be PUPs, which is a hericottory story told from the perspective of misfits called the PUPs. The date has not yet been announced.
Okay, so I'm gonna say what we can hear. I'm gonna also introduce myself. My name is Ryan Sun and I lead class of twenty-twenty-four. So, uh, we're gonna talk about here some things that we have coming up. So we have back to school night, which is coming up this Thursday, as well as the club fair at the school, and that is this September twenty-first. And students are going to be able to explore a lot of new clubs, especially at the club fair in March. And they're also going to be able to join in on some of the most popular clubs at currently at high school, which are FBLA, P Club, and Quads, that's three pretty big ones. And for back to school night, we're also going to have the clubs, uh, starting their kind of second club fair for the parents at six-thirty, which will be a half an hour before back to school night officially begins at seven o'clock. And then we'll also have ambassadors from the student council, P Club, and Pal, who's leaders, to be assisting parents with navigating around the school during the night. And also, we want to mention that P Club is going to be having a back to school night PIP parking auction, and they're basically doing a bidding, and the highest bidders are going to be awarded with car seats. So they can afford to try to brush terms that night, and the proceeds will be used for all of the P Club's upcoming events. So moving on to some sports updates, we have the records for all of the current fall sports. We have boys soccer is at zero to four, girls soccer is one to two, girls volleyball is two to three, girls tennis is three and two, football team is two and two, and field hockey is one and three. So just talking about fundraisers coming up, we have the boys and girls soccer programs, and they're holding a joint fundraiser at Montpelot Wild Rings, which is gonna be in Parsippany, and it's gonna be tomorrow, actually, Wednesday, September twenty. And then another thing is that senior portrait critiques are also now gonna be available. And then we have the critique date scheduled for October thirtieth and October thirty-third, so if you'd now sign up for those and search. So all the things we have coming up as well, we have the senior banquet, which is going to be on cruise, and that's coming up this Friday, September twenty-second. The banquet is gonna start at five and run until ten, and it's gonna be at Lincoln Harbor, and seniors are gonna be able to enjoy relaxing, enjoying each other on Hudson River. We're also having, so from September twenty-sixth to September twenty-ninth, the SAC will be doing their annual fall spirit week, and they will have a pep rally on, for a full day on the twenty-ninth. And the themes this year are going to be drama day, soccer monsters, party debt, white guys, and Halloween. And the seniors, the class of twenty-twenty-four is also going to be doing their own senior spirit week, and that's gonna be for the week of Halloween. And the themes we're gonna have are drama day, Halloween, monochromatic day, holiday day, and then Matthews versus Athens. We also have the wholecoming dance, which is scheduled to be on October nineteenth, and that theme is yet to be determined. We also have some counties for various sports that are permitted to start on the first week of October. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Excellent. Thank you so much, Jordan, because we really appreciate you. So, welcome back, everybody. Uh, we're gonna start with two presentations first, and then get some remarks. See, we have several of our veterans here, so we're gonna ask them to come on up here. We have a presentation. So, Commander, if you wanna come up? Yes, you can grab the mic off.
Great. Okay, thank you for having me here, and thank you for having my comrades in arms from post five-four-eight-one. It's always a good thing to do things with the school systems and the support group and also the board of ed. It's a relationship we've had for a while with our contests for essays and things like that. Okay. And also, uh, the awards that we give out to the students, and also the, uh, the participation of high school students that come to our events as drummers and singers and things like that. It's something that gives me a pleasure, and I look forward to working, always working with the, with the youth in town, but that's my commercial, okay? Now, what I'm really here for is a presentation for a, uh, each year, each year, the veterans of foreign wars selects elementary, middle, and high school teachers to participate in what we call the Smart Mayor VFW National Citizenship Education Teacher Program. Prime candidates for this award are teachers who promote America's history, civic responsibility, flag etiquette, and patriotism. At the state level, VFW Teacher of the Year recognizes three exceptional teachers for their outstanding commitment to teaching Americanism and patriotism to their students. Now, when you're in Jersey, we have a hundred and eighty-eight posts. We have what equivalent to the counties, but over nineteen districts. So out of all of those posts and districts, uh, we, post five-four-eight-one, was able to have a winner at the state level. That winner was Rick Presenti of Robert Arluzar Middle School, history teacher, and he was awarded the state middle school teacher of the year. Which resume of patriotism? You can just say a few words about it, how it got there. His resume of patriotism is extensive. Over the years, Rick has worked with his students organizing the placement of veteran markers and flags at the township sanitaries on Memorial Day. For the flag placement, Mr. Presenti has produced and distributed a video making people aware of this activity, which instills both patriotism and respect. Rick has organized numerous events that salute veterans. He's been the school's leader in many different activities that center on respect for veterans and an emphasis on recognizing sacrifices they have made. He's organized school, uh, the school students in numerous Veterans Day activities and educating them on the importance of what that day means. And just so you know, coming up this Veterans Day, eleven-eleven and eleven-eight, we will be having our Veterans Day ceremony at the high school auditorium. It's going to be another, what I think is gonna be a very special event. We have a speaker coming from Texas, and some of you may have seen or been to our last event, uh, which was Memorial Day, where we had George Washington speak, and he was with his horse. So don't miss the, don't miss our events. They're, they're pretty good. And also, we partnered with the town doing nine-eleven. Um, and right now, I'd like to present Rick with a certificate. Uh, this certificate, uh, Rick has already been recognized at the state level. This certificate comes from National, our national organization. Let's go it. I'll just read it quickly. This is it. Quite impressive. That's our national commander. He gets his little add in there with this picture. In recognition of being selected, the state VFW Smart Mayor Teacher Award winner for citizenship education, and witness whereof Commander in Chief, uh, Timothy Ball. So that's the award for Rick. Congratulations.
Um, you know, it's a very humbling experience when you're honored by veterans and standing up here, um, knowing that, you know, the post five-four-eight-one is way across the street from Arluzar. And being a social studies teacher now for my twenty-second year here in Montpelot, it's a, it's just a special, you have a special opportunity there, knowing that the post is so close. Um, just beginning of school, we were able to walk my class over to the nine-eleven ceremony, um, and, and, uh, be able to, not so much take part in it, but even just bring twenty kids over and taking pictures and promoting those pictures throughout the school. The pictures have been running on the front TV since that day. Um, that's super important to me, it's super important to the, to the school, and I know this for, for all post members, so. Um, you know, twenty-two years, I've made a lot of great friendships, uh, with, with the guys that are here, and unfortunately, those guys that are no longer here. Um, and I can't do anything, uh, in speaking about our post without mentioning Joe Quaid, we all know, um, he was the inspiration behind all the things we've ever done. Um, and, uh, you know, I know he's up there watching. Um, I watched Joe salute our monument that we dedicated, uh, back in two thousand nine in front of Arluzar, and he was just crying looking at it, knowing that, um, the students, the teachers, and, you know, we all remember. So, uh, I'm proud of that, I'm proud of the new monument, that placement, knowing that, uh, you know, Joe stood in front of that monument, and it's, you know, always gonna be there. So I know the, the post members are happy about it as well, and, uh, you know, we look forward to keeping it going. Uh, there's nothing, I, I've always said that, I said this at the ceremony, not a while ago, just a minute ago, um, my favorite day in years, going on the Memorial Day, a couple days before the Memorial Day, with our kids and, and replacing the flag with veterans. It's nothing but. I appreciate you guys, and I know the kids and the teachers at Arluzar do, and I look forward to it.
We're not quite finished. We have one more part of this, and that is part of the national recognition. It not only recognized the teacher, it recognized the school. So with that, we have an award or a certificate, uh, for, uh, Robert Arluzar Middle School, and we'll have Assistant Principal John Facelli come up and accept that award. It's a great, great school and great teachers you have here. It's unbelievable. Thank you.
We're gonna ask you guys to go and take a picture right now. And I just wanna say, the, uh, the VFW did a great job with the nine-eleven ceremony last week, and we had middle school students over there with Rick, and it was just beautiful. I appreciate you guys' time. I think the students are wanting out of that, but it was, it was a beautiful ceremony. We had high school students there as well, putting the dinner bits in the seat, so it was a great day all, all of us.
I think John kissed a hitchhiker, I wasn't saying it. Mike Palmer was also a veteran, was an attendance last one day. I was an attendance, we'll miss him, and I thank you as superintendent. I'd like to congratulate the VFW on the wonderful program, and every year, proud she's getting better, getting later, but I think the boss city left us all with, with something that we all will remember in the future. And personally, I thank you everyone in veterans for your service and what you've done. Thank you.
I'd also like to express, um, a thanks to Rick, um, for inspiring, I think, everyone in the community. Um, I, we're so lucky that we have social media for those, for those avenues, and he inspired me. I'm gonna be a Langrease in Totowa, um, at a cemetery in Totowa where my grandparents and all my relatives are. Um, so keep inspiring. Um, it really means a lot to know and to see the pride we have in America and all of our veterans, past and present, and to our wonderful VFW, um, you're an inspiration. Um, and I think every ceremony that I've gone to, which you're, I mean, it feels that way, it's really very spiritual, and you come away loving America even deeper than you thought you ever could, and, um, the sacrifice that those who passed, um, who gave us this beautiful country and protect us. And so I, I just wanna thank you all and Rick for everything.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to all the great news. Daria, so we have the Mount Montpelot Education Foundation, Daria Sinaldi Romeo is here to talk to us about the great things that this organization does and present us with a little gift.
Thank you. So first, I just wanna say, this has been a long time coming. We've been working on this for about twelve months with Dr. Roman, and I really need to introduce, um, the members of the board and a member of our team, and I hope that they join in up here. Please, please come up here. Carol Palmer is our treasurer, Lauren Palmer, one of our members, and daughter of Carol Palmer. Christine Friedling, come up here. Christine Friedling is our marketing expert and puts all of our marketing material together. Michael Abenson, past president and vice president currently, and Jody Patriarca, secretary in social media. So it is just great pleasure, all of us, today to share with you what is the culmination of many hours of fundraising and many hours of love putting this together. So what is the Mount of Educational Foundation? For those of you that may not be too familiar with us, we're an organization that fundraises, and we raise money, and we give it back to the schools in educational grants that the teachers write. So you may say, well, what does that really mean? So it can mean anything from starting a newsroom at Arluzar, to putting a science room in, to worrying about, you know, TVs and how do they grow, and the arts department, and fostering, um, the science in education, as well as in the high school, looking at the music department. So there's many different ways that we look at that, and let's share with you a little bit about a grant, because we're so excited about it. This grant that we are giving, which is quite substantial, is a STEAM grant, so it touches science, technology, education, arts, and mathematics, all of those. And it was put together, actually, one of the great childs of Dr., of Ms. Andrea Lurin, and I do wanna thank her, because she was really spearheading this with all of the schools. So I do wanna thank you so much with the overarching guidance of Dr. Roman. And so between the two of them, they actually put the grants together for all seven schools. And that's what really makes this a very unique grant. So it's not for one school, which is what we thought we would give out, it's for all seven schools which will benefit from it. So you may say, well, what does it entail? So if you can see on the, on the, um, video screen, it entails a lot of different things. So we thought about how can we integrate vertically all of the elementary schools so that they all benefit from the same type of grant? So what does that mean? So for the elementary schools, we're actually gonna be starting a video cluster, and it's everything from buying GoPros to cameras to a green screen, um, and Michael Abenson was also very involved in that, as that is his background. So it is really the highest technology that you can get for the elementary school. And why is that important? Well, it's important because they're starting young, everyone is on their iPhones, and so why should they not learn how to make a video or a reel? And this is something that they would be able to create. In addition, the starting to be able to speak and present and see themselves on video, so it just starts their speaking presentation as they go into Arluzar. And so Arluzar always improved with the grants that we have already given them with our newsroom. So for the Arluzar piece of it, we are looking at science kits, which really expand our chemistry labs, we're looking at a Hoover cam, and you may say, well, what is Hoover cam? I said the same thing when Andrea presented it. And it's basically a cam that hovers over and allows you to go from a computer on a screen. And so it would enhance the technology that hardly exists today within the schools. In addition to that, we're also looking at, um, drawing tables for the students, and that is, this is a graphics substantial room, and you can see the numbers, I'm just gonna go over here, because I have my glasses on, I can't see. So the school, Arluzar itself, has ten thousand dollars being donated, the elementary schools have twenty-five thousand, and the high school has twenty-five thousand as well. And so for the, for the high school, it's really about the arts department. It's about how do we really enhance what we currently have? So we're putting in a scroll saw, uh, we're doing three-D printers, which are really, really cool and neat for our students, excuse my lack. Um, we are also putting in a kiln, which is probably one of the more expensive items in there, for the arts department, and then, of course, the blends of kits, which go into the CSI, a component of that. So when we wrap this all together, it's a sixty thousand dollar grant that we have that we're gonna be presenting today. And so for us, we fundraise, we raise money, we do it, um, we do our gala de rafa, we're in the middle of doing that right now. We've done everything from fashion shows to windows, you name it, we do it, and all our money goes back. So again, um, we're really excited today to present this, we're excited to continue in helping with keeping Montpelot schools at the top of the educational scale and enhancing it, um, as we go along. So we thank you for this opportunity. All of these individuals have given countless hours of time and dedication to this, so we are very proud to present to you after going in and check for one treasure, sixty thousand dollars that you can use to purchase.
So when I joined the district a year ago, Daria was one of the first people I met. She came into my office, and she's like, all right, how can we work together? And she has all this money, you know, she wants to share with us, and that's when we started brainstorming, when people, like, you know, how can we affect all the schools? So as you saw, you know, the MAF has given over two hundred thousand dollars to our school leadership, and we couldn't operate without you. We really appreciate the commitment and dedication from all your staff, everybody volunteers, helps us out, and it's the children that benefit, and we really appreciate that. So thank you, about all of us, for all the work that all of you did, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
I just wanted to, I, I've met Daria and a few other people a couple years ago, um, and they're a fantastic, energetic, dedicated group of people. And what's really nice about this is that if you have kids in the school system and you have some time, I encourage you to join the group. And if your kids are out of the school system, this is an excellent opportunity to get back in, okay, to start, to stay involved in schools, even though your kids may have graduated to high school, you can join the group, you can get involved, and you can do really absolutely amazing, wonderful things for the students that are in the schools today. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I wanna add to just, uh, not, not only thank you for the money, of course, but the nice presentations they've been supplying, allowing, explaining exactly what's going on, that's appreciated.
Yeah, so my report, so thank you. It's just a great way, welcome back to everyone, everybody, and it's a great way to start the school year, these great presentations and these gifts, so we really appreciate that. Uh, and if you can see how outstanding our school is, just few examples of how we're working with the communities, and we really appreciate that cooperation and that partnership. So first week of school, first two weeks of school, we've been great, we can see a lot of smiling faces on the parents, teachers, administrators, and of course, the students. So, uh, it's gone off without a hitch, we're really excited about the school year. We had back to school night at Arluzar and elementary schools, and we have it at the high school on Thursday coming up. Uh, we're handing out literature about the referendum, and we have a little table there trying to inform people, we're And we have a little table there trying to inform people more about the referendum that's coming up. And it's just been a whirlwind speed so far as we're talking to different residents. We also have been, we put a video that's out there on the website and we shared with all the parents as well. So if you get a chance to take a look at that, we really appreciate that. It really helps inform you a little bit about what's going on with this referendum and why we're doing this. We also have a link on the town website. So the township has a website that, I think you have to go two clicks in, then you could also get to our referendum information on our website if you're going through the township. So we are working in cooperation with the township as well on that. Last is on our website, we also have a page with all FAQs, the frequently asked questions. So there's a wealth of information there. Any question you've probably had that's come up in the past six months, from about funding to, you know, the projects, to everything, with pictures. So please familiarize yourself with the website. And over the next two months, the vote is on December 12th. Over the next two months or so, three months, I'll be going out with my team. We'll be talking to different groups in the town. We'll be speaking to all the different committees and things. Just trying to inform the public so they can make an informed decision on December 12th. And that's my report.
Ms. Lunt, your report?
So at this time every year, I usually do a presentation on where we stand related to our summer projects. During the summer, that is the time when the students are not present and we have the ability to do a lot of work within the buildings, to do repairs, to do renovation work that helps to go and be ready for the next school year. In this particular presentation, I will be highlighting the elements that were done this summer. But due to the fact that the referendum is out there, I wanted to kind of fill in some of the holes between the last referendum in 2017 and the work that we've been consistently doing at all the different buildings that is now culminating with the referendum now. So in terms of that, Montpel Township High School has been one of those buildings that has received a lot of work throughout the span of the last seven years. With the referendum in 17, we did do roof replacements that allowed us to then put solar panels onto the roofs at the high school. However, by the time 17 came, the building had almost put in 50 years of service to students of Montpel, and it was beginning to feel a little tired. One of the big projects that did not get put as part of referendum in 17 was some of the work on the outside of the building. The original metalwork that was part of the 1972 construction was beginning to deteriorate and needed to be replaced. And so as a result, what we ended up doing was we ended up doing a renovation on the outside of the building, covering over the areas that need to be repaired in that metalwork and then repainting the outside. What that allowed for is to cover the repair we had done, but it also enabled us to go and create a more uniform look to the high school so that the green of Montpel Township was predominantly STEAM. And then we were able to add the board's additional signage, emblems, brandage, and its motto, "Educate, Inspire, and Empower." And that was part of the 2019 work that we did. In 2022, the turf field in the stadium had reached the end of its useful life and the track was beginning to deteriorate. And so what we ended up doing was doing a renovation on that turf as well as the track. And the picture that you have there gives a nice aerial view. You can see the solar panels on the roof that were part of the 2018 project as well as the turf and then the reworking of the front of the building and the work on the entire building related to the uniforming of colors. That was not the only work that was done. Inside, as part of the 2017 referendum, we did bathrooms. We upgraded the air conditioning systems and we did the main gymnasium. And these are some of those pictures. For those who are not in the high school, you never get to see these things. For women, you never get to see the men's bathrooms. So this is a big opportunity for us. But also the gym. Many people have complimented us on how beautiful the gym turned out. And this is the picture of the main gym. That does not mean that there's not constantly work that needs to be done. The secondary gym, the auxiliary gym, was looking a little tired. You know, look at the comparison of the auxiliary gym to the main gym, and it definitely needed to have some updating. And so that was one of the big projects for this year, was to do repainting and resurfacing of the wood, repairing different things within that. And then the last piece that we're currently still working on at the high school is new lighting in the rotunda. The rotunda lights do mostly date back to their original installation back in the '70s. So they would be going to LEDs, and those LEDs will provide an additional amount of light as well as being allowed to give spirit light, lighting in terms of changing colors or things like that for spirit reasons and things like those that's. At Lazard, another building that has had a lot of work done to it. Like with the high school, we redid the roofs and we added solar panels in 2018. But then we did a lot of exterior work in terms of beginning to update side. The biggest change that we did to that was the addition of a security vestibule. So when you were driving by Lazard, what you will notice is that, yes, we did painting and the unifying of colors. We added signage in terms of lettering and additional signage on the gymnasium. But the big change is the addition of a security vestibule. What this provides is that when visitors come to the building, they come in through those doors, but they can't actually get into the actual building until they've been vetted and allowed in. And that provides an extra level of security for the staff and students who are in the building. When we reference security vestibules, this is a perfect example of what we're talking about that we are looking to do as part of our referendum at all locations. We also did work inside, like the high school. The bathrooms were redone, the media center was redone, the gymnasium was redone. There's Lazard's gymnasium. And that was all part of the referendum in 2017. However, the building, again, has put in over 50 years of service and it needed some additional work. This particular hallway with the red locker is an E3 hallway. It's the hallway that's all the way in the management building. And this is what that hallway looks like now. We did reflooring, repainting, covering of the old tile, repainting of all of the lockers. And it really, again, parroted for another 50 years worth of students to be serviced by the building. We did focus on two elementary schools this summer, the first being Cedar Hill. Cedar Hill had had work done last year on its gymnasium. There's a picture of us doing work last summer. The sister schools, Cedar Hill, William Mason, and Woodmont, all have a similar floor plan and all date back more than 50 years. Their outside exterior of their gymnasiums, similar to what was happening with the high school, were beginning to deteriorate due to weather. And so we had done a renovation that began last year in order to reface those. There's this work on it last year. And we then continued our work. There's a completed version. All three of the schools have a very similar look. They all show their individual mascots for their buildings. And in the case of Cedar Hill, we then extended that to provide additional headroom. This was one renovation that was very soon enough needed. The wall that is shown in that picture on the bottom next to the steps was actually going and was going to come down. So we replaced that, we replaced the steps that were attached to it. Where the individuals are kind of standing and kind of where the dirt pile is, that is where a security vestibule will be going for Cedar Hill. And it will be similar in its purpose to that which was at Lazard, where the individuals coming to visit the building will only be able to get as far as the vestibule until they are vetted, and then they will be allowed into the building. That work on the vestibule will be occurring as we enter into 2024. And then the last school that we did work on this summer was Valley View. Valley View, like the other schools, also had work done as part of the original referendum. But we then expanded to improve the signage and the exterior at Valley View. One of the evidence that had been done over the time of the 2017 referendum was that air conditioning was put into every single educational spot. You can see the air conditioner hanging on the side of the building. What we did as part of the renovation that we did was that we then had it removed. And that was in progress. And there is the new building with its new signage and front entrance. It provided additional entrance for handicapped. And then we've been able to rewrite the building. You'll see there's a square or rectangle in the gym wall. Those will be windows that are being added to the gym which will provide additional light. So although the referendum is addressing many of the elements related to the increasing enrollment and providing an upgrade to the heating systems that are in the building, adding the vestibules to those buildings that hadn't been done, you can see that we've been doing work on the buildings all the way through. We just keep chipping away, repairing, and maintaining the assets that are being used every day by the kids.
To me, you and your staff have done such an outstanding job. I feel really proud to sit on the board of the team as part of the team that not only provides academic excellence to our students, but provides it in updated, clean, cared-for facilities. Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Lunt is the Mrs. Administrator, but she's also in charge of all the buildings. So she, along with Mr. Toth, who's in charge of rebuilding some grounds, are doing a incredible job. So much time goes into this all summer long as well as all during the year. And a lot of these projects that you don't see are behind the scenes, in private, you know, when the public is able to see. But it is nice to show that we do the exterior of all the things, we show the beauty. But the care that we see on the outside is also being done on the inside. And I want to commend you as well as thank you for all the work that you, your team, Diane, everybody here that they do it all throughout the year to help keep our buildings up to the top level. So thank you.
And also not only are the buildings being maintained, not only are academics very good, but also the kids themselves really rise up in our talent. They have a tremendous spirit about them. And you'll see this in the community section. I just want to point this out. Valley View had just raised $2,000 more dollars for the St. Jude's Research Program. This means that they have raised in the 23 years that they've been doing this close to a quarter million dollars for St. Jude's. That kind of volunteerism really speaks highly of our students. They're getting good education and they're giving back to their communities. And I'd also just point out real quick that Karen Wardell, the writer at Lazard, was privileged to attend a Smithsonian National Air Space Museum STEAM program where she received a $2,000 grant to help out the schools. And she'll be going back there again next year and receiving a little bit more grant. So we have great facilities, great teachers, and great students. So let's move on to our committee reports. Facilities and finance, Karen.
Thank you for being, the facilities and finance committee members before a board meeting and discussing the status of the referendum as well as constructive projects.
Policy, Joe?
Joan?
Yes.
We have a new report.
Okay, thank you. Communication, Mike Paul.
We actually met last night and discussed a couple of things. Discussed our new website, our app, which is a wonderful tool over our last one. I tried to ensure most of the activities are easy and user-friendly. For all shares, our new way to communicate is from a district. We're going to try to use schools you just grew up in originally. So give us some features. And discussed our new Share 911 communication system. And we discussed a lot of things about communicating for the referendum. Discussing the social media, vote signs, which are hopefully distributed. Dr. Grom is going to speak about numerous organizations over the past, over the next several weeks. And he's going to have a virtual presentation before the vote. I think it's Wednesday, November 11th. And one more, Monday, we've discussed the same discipline as last year. A lot of emails. Just to let everybody know that it can write those up potentially, voteable, so I'll send you the.
Mike, grab Paul, thank you. Yes, we met on September 12th. So many items to talk about, we already mentioned in previous reports, but I'll touch on briefly. First, the armed armed SRO in our district will be moving back to regular controls starting next year, January. So the administration is involved with the Montpel Police Department on replacing it and then find the next SRO that will be rolling into the district. Security vestibules, as Katina mentioned, at Lazard is mostly done. There's a little one window piece that got in to finish that. And she showed a picture of Cedar Hill is getting started on their security vestibule. Next, visitor ID system for schools. That is something that's been investigated, something where maybe a driver's license or some other kind of ID which we scan. And then that person will be logged in as a visitor in the school system. And that's something that the administration is looking at, investigating to see if this will be valuable and most effective for our district. Some of those mentioned at our last committee report is a Share 911 communication system. And that's an internal system, not for the general public to use, but it's for the police and teachers and administrators to use to communicate back and forth. Should anything happen, they can quickly communicate about where it's occurring and help the police or other first responders get to the right people in the right places at the right time. Unfortunately, there is a problem with the software. I think that it's not, well, not all the software pieces are communicating with each other correctly. So the Share 911 company is making enhancements. This is enhanced for the product for both the nation, it's not just for us. But once it's done, we'll go back and reevaluate the Share 911 program and test it again to see if it's effective and if it works well in the district. We have seen increased cybersecurity threats from the internet. It's happening with the school systems, whether it's phishing, whether it's brutal attacks, all kinds of security threats happening in recent, over the years. And so the administration has spent a lot of time investing in training, investing in better tools to help filter out these threats and prevent as many as possible. The most important takeaway is the email, that you have to be careful of what you look at, what you click on, make sure it's a legitimate email or ask for legitimate information before you click or access anything else. The single best thing that everyone can do to help prevent any security issues. There is a training that's being developed for kids. I think Leslie Scheckman is forming a dozen training to train us what happens when there's fraud offenses. So they can help teachers, administrators identify if a student is adversely affected with. with those, or if they need some intervention or something like that, just to help the kids, help the administrators in case there's something that's going on with the student, then it's not necessarily a teacher or an administrator that's privy to or able to see. And finally, there's additional training on behavior for access violations throughout the district. The administration, the teachers are seriously trained to help identify any issue that can pop up with the visiting building, or with the students, or with other people that may adversely affect the school or the school system or the students, so that appropriate interventions can be scheduled and implemented. That's it. Okay. Your first is school board, Karen.
So I got the privilege of attending what's called a meeting group, meeting on September 13th, and this is a group of various associations, Association of School Administrators, NJASBO, which is business officials, NJA, NJPSA, NJPTA, NJSPA, and the group discusses a variety of topics in different schools, and in the conversation is the Commissioner of Education. So this was a very interesting meeting, lots of frank conversation, and I'm pleased to be able to attend this in the next couple of years.
Forest County Education Services, Joe.
Yes, we met on the 13th, and outside of the whole business, just discussing the communication that we have to, or virtual vote option, we have to approve, revise rates for potential services, as well as board the communication contracts that could be used for those students. That's what we're going to do. Okay, safety, work for Trump Awareness. Yes, Trump Awareness, we met on Thursday 7th, and just discussing their plans to be upcoming on the day that we pick this up and that's the major thing for it. The board is trying to show the parent development success, discuss friends, we're going to try again in the next fall.
Okay, CCL Liaisons, CCL, Karen.
On August 30th, some of the coordinators, including Mrs. Finesse, Dr. Foreman, walked through a few of the schools just to see some of the projects that were being completed, and that was actually a lot of fun. I also attended on September 13th, Cedar Hill's Back to School Night, as part of our referendum, and it was positively active, very positive. And on September 1st, it was a Welcome Back Complication. And I personally love this day, this is the day when all the teachers come back, and there is just so much enthusiasm and excitement in the air. I witnessed our superintendent in his second career as a comedian. He really hired a lot of chuckles from the teachers in the room, the staff in the room. And honestly, in 17 years that I've been working with her, I've really never seen a superintendent make such a connection with the staff, the humor, personal storytelling, and just overall warmth. And to have an opportunity to attend this day, it really is an exciting day, and Scott, I hope that remembers joy for today as much as I did for the few minutes that I wasted
Valley View, Joe. BTC Liaison, Joe, Valley View.
Valley View as in tomorrow either.
Okay, thank you. Okay, John, William Mason.
Also meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow night too? Wow, everyone's busy tomorrow night. Okay, Mike Kong, who am I?
Not sure, it's right out of the schedule. I did have, um, committee, did know to be back to school, I lost all, Dr. Gorman had some pamphlets, stuff up the middle of the mountain, the positive energy coming out, people said it's good for the parish, and just calling up some of these parents at the complication, because they're also really nice and kind, and also cool to the kids in the grand course of the warmness of the complication, so that's my special.
L'Zar, STEAM.
Their first meeting will be October 16th, Monday.
Next, we're white, Dr. Ford. Yes, we met on September 11th. So, principal, announced that it had a very good opening to the school, welcoming eleven new teachers and staff to the high school. Back to school night is this Thursday, 21st. As mentioned by the high school reps, at 6:30, the club activity fair, it was set up in the cafeteria, and at 7:00 PM begins the portion of the school, handle the teachers and work through the kids' schedules. Also on back to school day is a teacher luncheon, and as well, a lot of parents have signed up and donated the money or the pool to the teachers to provide lunch and show their appreciation for the wonderful things that they do for our students all year long. And next, PSATs are coming up, 10th and 11th graders in October, and 9th graders, they can take it as well, but you need to pay a fee for that. Photos, photos for high schoolers are coming up, 10th and 6th as well, those will be a busy month. And finally, our next meeting is beginning January 6th, that's at the beginning of the And just to leave back on that, board members, if you want their photos taken, you go to high school building 6 as well, and just walk in, parents will be cut one. Also mentioned that I was at the Fortale PCC meeting, practice school night, and again, the parents were very enthusiastic, it was a lot of, it's just nice to see all the parents there, going to class, class meeting, teachers, they had a great time, there's a lot of enthusiasm in the referendum, but it was a very nice night here on there, and I think they sold lots of sentences, right? Yes, you know. Okay, so now we are on to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the board of the district, please come forward to the microphone, state your name, address, and just tell us what you think. Hey, Jim.
Good evening. June 8, 11, we drive. So we have the veterans here today, and we gave a wonderful presentation on the beautification of the schools. I'm a product of the school district, I started in Toato's School, went to Cedar Hill, didn't make it to L'Zar, but then also went to Montpel High School a couple of years ago, I won't say how many. And it's really come a long way. Last time I was here for one of the board meetings, the library was really nice, so wonderful job. I'm wondering if your next beautification, which I hope will be soon, will include the Purple Heart Monument. The veterans were here this evening, they do a lot with the school. Their on Veterans Day, which will be at the high school, there's going to be one of the first women Army Rangers will be speaking, which is why they're having it at the high school, we're expecting a very large crowd. It's Lisa Duster, she's an Army Ranger who served in the Afghan and Iraq War. So, and that's like your entryway to the high school is that monument. And that monument is one of the first Purple Heart monuments that wasn't on, that's on school grounds, on municipal property or a school property. So it really would be amazing if you could spick it up. There's a collapsed bench that's been there for, I don't know, two or three years, the trees are overgrown, there's really no landscaping, no shrubbery, et cetera. I think they'd appreciate it, I think people that go five foot, I think it would just be a really fantastic gesture for the veterans and anyone else, you know, pulling in to see that. Thank you.
You know, things like that, you can do everything, but maybe the Boy Scouts also helped out, you know, if any that wants to get a bunch of credit.
David, it's interesting that you mention that, and Jim probably realizes this as well, but that monument was an Eagle Scout project.
Yes, yes.
Someone wanted to beg us, right then.
Do you happen to know anyone of these rising up on the ranks over the Eagle Scouts? Is there any connection to that?
I know the Eagle Scouts have other projects that they are working with the VFW, but no one's taking this on, any of these things property. And I mean, it should be done soon, Veterans Day's going to be here in 2019. Thank you.
Thank you. Go look into that. Thank you. Anyone else to help the participation? Seeing none, close that. Motion for sections I through N.
Come on.
Second. Second. Thank you. Section I, the minutes. Questions on section J? Do you have an agenda?
Yes, we have an agenda for the Montpel Education Foundation, for their donation to St. Gavcuy, the exact number is $59,965.
Questions on section K, facilities and finance? Section L, question L? Section N, curriculum? Section N, policy? Any questions, ask for a look.
Dr. Foreman?
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes.
Mrs. Fanna?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Petrazino?
Yes.
Mr. Rattford?
Yes.
Dr. Wegrath?
Yes.
Thank you. Is the, section P, no, I have to put section, section Q, old places, any old places?
Just found a monitor for relay, I realized it's been several months, but remember, I found it in the tablet in 62,000.
Excellent. Good job, everyone. Section R, general economics, can you use this?
I could do it. I just wanted to congratulate the general sitting next to me, Joe Daughtry, he achieved the level of master board member from the New Jersey School Board Academy, a program
Any other questions, any other comments? Seeing none, as the motion closes. Thank you. Good night, everyone.